This conference will now be recorded.
Municipal council meeting today's it's 5:30 on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. This is a workshop to give some direction to restructure the medical marijuana ordinance for Alpena. You're online. We're we're going to we're going to kind of run this. I'm gonna ask Bernie while we'll call the order. Sorry, I'm just getting ahead of myself.
Councilwoman Haas?
Here.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noah?
Here.
And Mayor Waldorf?
Hi, here. For the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the book of justice. Okay, so so how we're gonna do this kind of a workshop, we have on city council is here. Virtually, we have Denise Klein, who is assisting us in this as well, and Bill Pfeifer, our city attorney. Can you both hear us and can we hear you?
I can hear you, mayor.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Denise?
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And so what we'll do is if anyone has some initial public comment that they would like to, I'll ask for that from here in the room live first and then virtually. And then now, as we're discussing this, it's a workshop. So if we're going over some points during the during the workshop that you would like to that you would like to address, certainly if you're here in the room, raise your hand. And if you're virtual, then perhaps a question mark in the chat and Steve will let us know. And as long as that, as long as that type of dialogue works with the meeting and it doesn't go off on a tangent, I'll definitely let you know. We're gonna stay here until a maximum of 7:00 PM this evening. And if we're done, we're done. If we're not, then we will refocus another night. And so I will ask anyone that does have some comments to keep them very specific to the changes, changes to the medical marijuana workshop, medical marijuana topic itself. Because that's what we're here for, if you don't mind. So I'll take any quick public comment from the room. Anyone virtual have pre-meeting public comment? Mr. Rosensky?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Again.
Perfect. So my name is David Rosienzki. I've attended these previously. I'm Assistant General Counsel for LJA Holdings II LLC, which does business as Green Buddha. I've returned today to voice my strong opposition to the potential revision of Alpena's medical marijuana ordinance, which would allow an unlimited number of provisioning centers to operate within the city. Respectfully, it once again implores city council to consider allowing the two approved provisioning centers to be allowed to be open for one year before seriously considering increasing the existing cap. Allowing Loom and Green Buddha to open and operate for a year would allow your city an opportunity to see how professional operators conduct business. We take compliance, safety and quality very seriously at Green Buddha, and I have no doubt that our competitor, Loom, does the same thing. Both LJA Holdings II or Green Buddha and Loom made investments in your community based on a fair expectation that there would be only two provisioning centers in your city. Changing the parameters at this point would undoubtedly lead to failures and criminality that I have alluded to in prior meetings that I've attended and made public statements. As a stakeholder with experience in other municipalities who have opted in, I would like to share some additional insights to consider as you discuss proposed changes to the marijuana ordinances. In addition to strongly opposing an increase in the cap on provisioning centers, I would caution you against imposing residency requirements as a basis for licensing application criteria. Detroit is currently undergoing serious and substantial legal challenges to its legacy program, which was an attempt to incentivize locally owned businesses to apply. The overwhelming assessment by litigators in this field is that Detroit is very likely to lose at the end of these lawsuits. As city council considers opting into the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, otherwise known as MRTMA, which is the adult use statute, I would like to reiterate the importance of allowing the first two provisioning center permit recipients to open and operate prior to allowing new market entrance. The adult use for recreational market is substantially larger than the medical market because anyone who is 21 or older can make a purchase without the necessity of a state issued card, as is the case with medical use. As a result, allowing new market entrance to open prior to or at the same time as to provisioning center permit holders would cause the same or worse detrimental effect that only removing the cap on provisioning centers would have. A common concern among municipalities who wish to give preference for adult use licenses to existing medical facilities licenses relates to the question of legality. There are at least three potential paths to consider that would likely avoid any legal challenges to doing so. First, based on section six, paragraph five of the MRTMA, or MRTMA as it is called, states, quote, "A municipality may not adopt an ordinance that restricts the transportation of marijuana through the municipality or prohibits a marijuana grower, a marijuana processor, and a marijuana retailer from operating within a single facility or from operating at a location shared with a marijuana facility operating pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act." Many attorneys, including myself, interpret this section in language to suggest that if a municipality opts out of MRTMA, it must still execute an attestation I form from MRA, which is required for any applicant under MRTMA to receive state approval. Taking this route would sidestep the entire issue, in my opinion. Second option would be to opt into MRTMA with an ordinance that explicitly restricts adult use permits to those who have already been awarded medical permits. This option would fulfill the statutory requirement of a competitive licensing process because such a process was already completed through the medical licensing application process. A third option would be for Alpena to weigh points on a MRTMA application more heavily in favor of existing medical permit holders. There are other municipalities who have taken this route, and I'm not aware of any successful legal challenges as of today. I hope these suggestions and insights are helpful in your discussions today. Please consider the wisdom in heeding caution and allowing those entities who made the effort to compete in your permit application process the ability to show you the positive effects of professional operators or untested businesses who will crowd the market and see multiple failures as a consequence. As I mentioned last time, it is much easier to to execute a small, slower rollout than it is to scale back an uncapped number of licenses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And your your points were well taken a couple at a couple of meetings now. And I just want to remind everyone that that we're not taking any formal action at this meeting. It was already voted at a meeting several meetings ago to to change the limit here. So we're we're not going to discuss what changing the limit because we've already done that and we've taken a vote. So here tonight, we're going to go right into the ordinance itself for medical. Now, your points on on adult use are are well taken as well. That will be a topic that I'm not so sure we'll get into tonight because I think we've got a lot to cover. But we'll we will be doing so in the future at some point. And I'm I'm assuming that you're keeping an eye on the pulse and you'll you will join us when when we have that discussion as well. And and thank you again, Dave. And so we'll move. Anyone else?
And I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Eric Foster. I am with Banks and Company. We're a public affairs firm that consults in this space. And we've worked with, as well as with clients who are in the industry, we also have worked with municipalities in respect of them crafting their ordinances. We conducted the rewrite of the Muskegon Medical Marijuana Ordinance and then also combining it with their adult use ordinance with respect to their process and policies for how they would govern both sectors. And we're involved with the state on the state's Ratio Equity Advisory Task Force and an additional advisory capacity. A few things that I want to let you all know, respective of what was stated to you all in the previous comment. One, with respect to residency, preferencing, as long as you put those systems as a part of the competitive process which you have, you do not run afoul of the dormant commerce clause, which is what the issue that the city of Detroit and the state of Maine ran into with respect to their statutory and ordinance requirements. We had worked in on behalf of clients with the cities of Grand Rapids and Sagatuck and I mean Sagatuck Dudless, as well as Sturgis, and then also seeing in Iron Mountain, Lansing, Cadillac, and other communities that have put in preferencing as either a part of the land use decision making process where prioritization in the queue was given to those who could demonstrate local ownership percentages. Or in terms of Grand Rapids, with what they did with their recreational ordinance and then their medical ordinance, their MyVita program and their C Vida program, which incentivize if you can demonstrate local ownership, it doesn't guarantee you a license, but it's part of the consideration, which is just the same as what you did. So you, with respect to that, will stay, if you keep that measure as you have already impaneled it, you'll stay safe from that. And I use Grand Rapids as an example. With Grand Rapids originally rolled out their medical marijuana ordinance with the MyVida and a preference point for 25% demonstrated local ownership, there were entities that sued, but they lost because it wasn't a prohibition or an elimination of fair competition under the dormant commerce clause. It was something that was a part of the competitive process, but it didn't guarantee you a license. Additionally, as a municipality, you have more powers that are connected to the decisions that you make, including through the Zoning Enabling Act, through Article seven, section 22 and 34 in the state constitution, in section 17 and 21, as well as in the both the MMFLA in subsection 333 dot 27, 205 subsection three with respect to your facility ordinance requirements. We have talked with the state and the state legal council, as well as with Andrew Brisbo and Desmond Mitchell, who's the in charge of the licensing department, and have asked for clarity in this respect with regards to local communities utilizing the full municipal powers that they have and other provisions of state law as it relates to regulating the industry. And their position is that it's up to the local community. Outside of price and purity, as stated in the statutory language, we don't weigh in. On the side of the MRTMA, which is the adult use, under 333 dot 27, 956 and 959, similar language allows you as the host community to make certain decisions and apply other statutory provisions of your municipal village or township powers. What you are only prohibited from a zoning dynamic, and that is the thousand foot with respect to the schools and what you designate as a school, but you can, as a number of communities have done, like Muskegon as an example, have a lower separation distance if you put that into ordinance so that you can remove that as a consideration. That being said, when you're in, I know some of the things that you are looking at with respect to this process, if you're, and we have some language because the appeal process was one of the things where Muskegon Heights brought us on, that they had had trouble with with respect to timing, scheduling, and process points. And we provided in their ordinance, which was adopted by their city council in September of 2020, a specifically detailed process that provided for a timeline for when someone would appeal a decision, how they would provide paperwork for city council to review, that they had to meet that paperwork deadline to be able to move forward with their appeal, then how the appeal would be held, presentation of information, and then rendering of a decision. If you would like, we could share that information with you from the Muskegon Heights ordinance, which is in section, well, it's in their specific ordinance. So I don't have the specific section number up right now. I do have it, but I can get, we can share that with you all. But ultimately, you have a lot of room. And lastly, I'll say, as a municipal corporation, as defined by the state in the constitution and through zoning enabling and the Home Rule Act, you always have the reservation of legislative prerogative. Number of communities have made changes during the course of their adoption of their medical marijuana enabling ordinances and their recreational ordinances. There's no provision at the state level or in the local level that guarantees a grandfathering if you are in on the medical side and you then do adult use at a later date, or if you move out. And actually, that's one thing that we do need to consider at a state level. Some states like Alaska, I'm sorry, I'll be quiet. But if you have some additional questions, we can love to be of some assistance to provide.
I appreciate it. We appreciate your experience, as well as David's, as we move through this process. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Denise for the start walking us through the changes. Are you just, I'm not sure what your role is. I apologize. I didn't ask in advance.
That's okay. I mean, it can be, we can do it however. We had Rachel and and Bill. We both, we all met, you know, and discussed this. So I don't know if, I can't see you guys very well, so I don't know if Rachel's sitting right there, but.
Yeah.
Denise, I think if, since you kind of crafted this document, I think if you want to walk through, and we have our agenda here, so the first thing we could address is our proposed changes. And I put 454 and 455 because that's both the licensing ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And when when we look at integrating the rubric criteria, we have places in each ordinance that that we could potentially integrate those. So I think that's where we start, Denise.
Okay. Yeah, so the the report that you're looking at was just some points that we came up with during our meetings, you know, to 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 change over, but also some points that we, some, I think, problem points that the subcommittee had encountered during the initial round of applications that we said, you know, back then that we needed to clear up. So I guess, you know, I can, we can just go through these points, you know, one by one, and then you all can talk about it. One of the things that we looked at in terms of, you know, not wanting, well, I think you can see, not wanting to just, you know, you throw out the rubric because the applicants that were in the first round, you know, had to comply with these things that we scored them on. So the committee felt that, you know, we shouldn't exactly just, you know, open it wide open so we could use that, those same standards that were in that rubric. But instead of being, you know, scoring points for submitting certain things or including certain things, that those that those criteria would become shall statements. So, you know, you have to submit this stuff in order to qualify. So just the example that I gave in the report, you know, like the security plan, is that they're going to, they shall present that plan, you know. The the rubric said, scored a point, I think, for if they presented that plan, which everybody did, of course. So I guess that's the first, I don't know if there's, if there's, I guess you should discuss each one of these in terms of whether or not you want to do that because that leads then into how we handle some of the standards.
I'm just stepping up here so we can see each other, Denise.
Okay. So I guess that's the first question to the council is, do you want to use those rubric standards and make them requirements?
Some of them.
I think the ones that we can or the, I think we'll decide as we go which ones we can and should. But yeah, I certainly think that we should, we should go over them and.
Yeah.
Did you want to start with the ones we have listed here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be fine to just go through what you have on your memo.
There are certain ones that, you know, there was a choice of two. So they scored more points depending on which thing they submitted or what. Like the first one, operating a business. We had two different criteria, more than two years and more than six years. And they got a, you know, a point for one and I think two points for the other. So doing it this way, you know, we need to have a single standard because we're not scoring, right? We're just saying, this is what we expect from applicants. So we've actually got, let's see, I think, three, yeah, one, two, yeah, we've got. So we had three of the rubric standards that were choices of two different things. So, you know, we were just throwing that back to you. I mean, we could have assumed as the committee that you would go with the higher standard for all three because I think every applicant did meet the higher standard, right, Rachel?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. But we want to, you know, that's your.
You also have the choice of not putting a standard in there at all.
Yeah.
We do, and we, well, we we do, we do have a choice. But I would, I would go with the fact that I want to be as fair to the to the applicants that that already applied and or won in the in the round of of choices. So I think as close as we can stay to what we already, what we already set as a bar, the better, with the exception of a few things that were. So that, so the choice, so I guess the choice would be the two years, six years, or a new number altogether. I'm fine with, and I think on this one, I originally questioned applicant demonstrates a history of operating a business. My suggestion was a provisioning business at that time. But then we decided that business experience, if I'm recalling, so I don't know if that is a suggestive change as well, you know, because now you're opening it up, having experience in this particular business might be something we want to consider going forward. Thoughts? That's what I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
I would disagree with, I would want to keep it just operating a business, period, because we didn't do that in the first time because we wouldn't have had as many applicants either. But I think the thought of operating a business, no matter if you're selling shoes or marijuana.
Pizza or marijuana.
It's still a very relatively new business area, so like. Arkham area, and I think that's.
Sure, sure. I just thought, we're having a discussion. I'm gonna throw it out there. Yeah, that's fine. I like the wording. I'm okay with the wording as it is a business. I do have a question for you, for whoever put it in the memo. It might be later, but since it came up now, the fact that it says applicant.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're just address that later.
I think we are, I think it is in there, Denise, is one of the things that we wanted to.
Right.
Yeah, but I know, I understand, but it was in here. I just read it.
The bottom of the second page of the memo was, how are we defining applicant? Um, does that, does it, you know, is it any person listed on the application? Because we had quite a few applications that had quite a few names on there in terms of the applicant. Or is it, you know, is the applicant, or we didn't, we don't have it stated, but is it the applicant, someone who owns 51% or more, or 50% or more? It's just not stated. It's not clear.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and similar applications, have we seen like a primary applicant? You know, is is a term that I've seen in the past, primary applicant being the 50% or more ownership in the business? Yep. So I don't know if that would be something we want to use as a primary applicant.
Right. We definitely had issue with determining, you know, what was, who was the applicant in the application. So and I believe we, we had hoped to address that under, you know, the definitions section to, and I mean, Bill could, Bill Piper could speak to that, but as to where we would put it in the ordinance.
Can we, can we pull some of this from, from what I'll just term as successful ordinances in other communities so we're not reinventing the wheel? Because sometimes it seems like we are, we're trying to reinvent the wheel. It's, this is, we did that whole three plus year waiting period. And so while we were in our waiting period and the whatever we called it, the wait and see period, other communities, much like ours, were already doing this. And so they have successful, they have successful ordinances. So when it comes to things like that, I would just as soon defer them, I guess. I know I just brought it up and I'm sorry, but I'd like to maybe just defer that to, let's just find an ordinance that's out there that's successful, that that no one has an issue with. I happen to have Rogers Township in front of me, and they, they have what? They call it an affiliate, and they have a definition of what an affiliate is and what a application is and things like that. So maybe just for the sake of time, those are very kind of relatively simplistic things that we could probably have Bill write up what his interpretation would be because he'll be defending it at some point. And then tell us if that's, it just kind of moves us on. Yeah, that's, and that's fine, defending it. Yeah, so we should have him up because.
So do they have a number in that?
So there says, in the, in it, they, they talk about the affiliate. And it says, means any person that controls is controlled by or is under common control with, is in a partnership or joint venture relationship with, or is a co-shareholder of a corporation, a co-member of a limited liability company, or a co-partner in a limited liability partnership with a licensee or applicant.
Well, I think that there does have to be some input as to whether or not you want to require a percentage of ownership.
Right, yeah. And I'm just using there just to have it. But, you know, it, I don't know.
It seems to me with some of the issues that we've had, requiring 51%, someone to have 51% ownership would solve a few things that we had issues with.
And you're saying, so.
So let's say I own a business and I have partners. There has to be someone who has 51% of the shares, whether it's me or another major investor. It just, it seems to make sense.
It it does and doesn't, I guess. So so you're saying that in this case, the applicant that we later define as only 51% of of the shares is going to be the one that has to have six years or more of experience running a business. And I guess I would just disagree with that because what if, well, what if their LLC is is separated that there isn't someone that has more than 51% of the ownership of business? What if it's a four way 25 or any other fractions that you can figure out? And so I'm not so sure that just putting 51% works in every situation because I just don't, because I'm 100%, so I don't know what that's like. But I'm assuming, that's why I'm kind of deferring it to Bill or Denise that might have a little bit more experience with how that should be, how that should be defined.
I mean, I think we can bring back some examples, which means we'll have another work session, but that is fine. Bill and Denise, did you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I'm sorry, I think we need to have some direction as to where council may want us to go because as an example, you could have a three member LLC that are all one third members that all have more than enough experience individually in certain businesses. But because none of them's a majority owner of the LLC, they wouldn't meet the criteria if we were going to say 51%. So we need to have some, some standard. And if it's 51, it's 51, that's fine. But just so we have a better handle on what council is directing us to bring back to it.
Who is the responsible individual in this that's not 51%?
Managing partner is a term, primary applicant, that's what I've seen in other documents. Or, you know, if you even get an even share, there's always a managing partner. Does that manage?
The batch of the responsible individual would be the one who applies for the license.
Yep. But, you know, as we've seen in the past, there've been licenses that have had three individuals, all equal. Who is going to manage? That's what I said. That's what I said. We have to have it defined as a primary applicant. Does this person have the experience? Are they the ones that we're going to go to, you know, talk to?
I just want to, just for talking about our thought there, the idea too, that the point of the rubric is specifically. Two award points though, to develop a tier of licensing. If we're going to eliminate. Part of that, the reason for the rubric no longer exists. We want to. If someone meets every other state requirement and is able to get a license, they went to business school, but they don't have. Experiences operating a business, why shouldn't they be able to do it too? They've met all the state requirements that they. You know, so the, the, the rubric point of it was to get the points to. Think the top applicants, which is no longer a point. I'm not saying we shouldn't have standards for the businesses, but. They've gone through all the state requirements. They have the capital to do it, which is significant regardless of what we asked for. Why are we, I guess, not taking about whether they have this specific business streams? They could have gone to, they could have an MBA, but not have actually prior experience. They might be great. I don't know that we should limit it. That's the point. The rubric was specifically for scoring points. Those are the thing about.
Yeah, and it's, it's scoring points. That is the, I agree with that. The other thing that we're working on there too is defining the standards.
Right.
So that's part of that because, you know, there's been many people that have great degrees in business and can't run a business. So that's, you know, the experience and that speaks to that. So.
But do we really, do we? Need to regulate that specifically, I guess. And if they got under other requirements and they have a state licensing, which is pretty stringent to get through.
I don't disagree with that. So, and they have to show to the state that they have the capital to do this. They have to have the capital to do this. So. They must be good in business to have that kind of point.
We don't know the same people.
Well, I think that, um, and, and these notes are just things for your consideration, of course.
Yeah.
I think the big question here, is there anything in the rubric? That we want to roll over to the ordinance? We just, we want to keep as criteria as.
Yeah, let's just. For the sake of moving on, let's just leave the operating a business thing as a question mark for now. Ever makes a good point and. So.
If the idea of it is to let the market.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I, I just honestly just don't want to give so many different things that are just so. Easily loophole. And this is one of them. That's just ridiculously easy to loophole. So, but let's just question mark that operating a business. Want to move on if you don't mind?
No.
Okay.
So this, this question actually leads into the, and I don't have this right in the report, but it actually leads into the next two standard on the rubric. Which is, and this is where the 51% or more actually gets brought up. Is the applicant demonstrates experience with owning 51% or more operating or managing a business with inventory, inventory tracking and control. And then the next one, the next standard talks about a business in a highly regulated industry. So I guess we might want to put question marks on those two because those are all applicant standards.
Uh, I think we, I think we might as well, right, for right now. And, and we'll just put, let's just put some more, some more off time into that. For whoever's, you know, has some time to poke around a little bit at either other ordinances or, or whether it's even worthwhile to put in there.
Then the next two were the capital investment and the jobs. Choices that you see on the report. So that's, we assumed you would be going with the higher one, but I guess that's, so that's the question.
Oh, and, and I guess this is my point on this because it was a, an extensive conversation at, um, one of the appeals is. What is capital investment when you're opening a business? Is it everything that you need to purchase and buy to open those doors? Is it just the property? What, what, we have to define capital investment that. In order to, and we can go with a higher one and it's, and it's attainable as long as we define capital investment. In my opinion, capital investment would be what they need to invest to open their doors. From, you know. Their, uh, computers to their inventory, to their building, to whatever they need to put in it to open their doors. To me, that's capital investment. Sometimes it's just considered property. I guess what direction are we going with? Question.
I don't know that someone should be. Just, you know, I wish I was a little bit maybe more in tune with the, uh. With how much it costs at capital investments, but. But suggesting that an applicant has to, uh, invest. At, um, at least $900,000, it just seems a little excessive to me. Some of, you know, if they're building a brand new building and a facility and things, but if they're purchasing an old bank that has a lot of the security stuff already in place and things of that nature. Uh, maybe not so much. So.
And, and I'm good with a lower amount, but we still have to define capital investment.
I understand.
I want to say though that having 500,000 wasn't required to. Be the winner of the rubric. Someone could have, everyone could have been $400 or less. You didn't have to invest 500,000. It would just work with more points more if you did. So we weren't saying you had to do this. It's the person who got more points for it. But it just wasn't required to actually open business. If everyone would have come in and. Under 500, somebody still would have had those licenses. So I'm going to consider. It's going to solve 50 bucks. So I mean, then again, the question comes, do you even want to?
Right.
Or roll that criteria in? And require any capital investment because there's going to have to be some. Anyway.
I don't know if that we, I just don't know if we can honestly put a number on it. I don't know. If you're going unlimited, I don't know how you can. I mean, cause.
I, I thi- I think there's a state standard that you have to prove to the state that you have a, a minimum investment. I believe it's 300,000.
That's if they require it. Then we might as well copy that. I don't mind you nodding, you guys back there. You're kind of in the industry. Is that, is that number correct? Then why don't we just leave that at that? They've already proved to the state they have capital investment.
It's already established saying.
Yeah, we got it. Yeah, I certainly don't mind you guys nodding or, 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 you know, if we say something that's completely off. That's fine. And, and our. If we.
My question is, I guess, you know, with 300,000 investment, capital investment. If we're going to use that number, how do they define that? You mean, that's, cause when I hear capital investment, it's not how many jobs you're creating and stuff like that. It's the capital that you're investing in your business to open it. It's all the hard things, not, you know, people and future jobs and such like that, which is. Economic benefits versus. Yes. Yep. Yeah. But we don't need to define it now. We're not, yeah. I mean, but if you're going to follow that number, why don't you see what the state has and we can look at that. What is their definition?
So we're good there with the capital investment part?
With the, are we going to look a little bit more into the definition of that? So we're not a hundred percent good. I don't want it to just say.
No, we're not going to use it. The state already does.
Yeah.
So we're just going to strike it.
I mean, you're saying, you're just going to say capital investment. No, of whatever, 300, you're just saying 300,000. No, it's going to say.
We're going to get rid of it. Okay. Because the state already did. That was my, that was what I was.
And I'm going to assume that we're going to require that everything that they have to submit to the state comes. To the application they're going to put in with us. So we would have that information in their application.
Yeah.
Should.
Right?
Who said yeah?
Yeah, we had that information.
Okay.
First round, we had the state applications.
And we're keeping that in. So we'll get all of that. So then.
Okay. We're going to require jobs. Jobs creation.
They have to, they have to, they have to make jobs.
Automation, you never know. Is, is that, it's, that's next on our, on our thing, but I don't know if we missed anything. Um, applicant. So on the rubric, the next thing is actually applicant's business plan includes a daily operation schedule. So I guess the, we're going to do, if we're going to keep something like that, it's going to be. You want to go down this or down that? I jumped from the memo because.
You can use the rubric. If you think there's something in there that needs to roll over to the ordinance.
Okay.
We were, we were going under the assumption that the rest of these were just going to be, they shall submit this.
Oh.
Doesn't have to be. So.
Okay. So does it? That's why you jumped down to the jobs part. So, so just quick, and I'll just whiz over really quick in case, um, someone on council wants to. And then just stop me at the jobs one. So applicant's business plan, applicant shall provide a. Daily operation schedule. Applicant shall present a proposed staffing plan. Complete with description of job duties, proposed wages and employee classification qualifications criteria. Uh, applicant shall present a documented employee policy book and code of ethics to ensure honesty and integrity of employees. Applicant shall present a sworn attestation that the applicant and or parties with 25% or more interest in the company have not been subject to any criminal. Or civil monetary judgments entered against in the last seven years, including family law and estate. Applicant shall present sworn attestation that the applicant and or parties with 25% or more interest in the company have not filed bankruptcy in the last seven years. And then there's the entire security plan, which I don't. I might, I don't know if I need to read over that. It's all the security stuff, 24/7 surveillance and things like that. So now we're down to economic impact, which is applicant proposes to create at least three, six or nine jobs.
Can I back up? Is there anything in the security plan that you would not want to roll over?
I, I did. I didn't read it, but I didn't think, I, I don't. Um, I can really quit for anybody that doesn't have a hard copy. So it would, it would, it would then read applicant. Shall present a plan to deter and prevent unauthorized entrances to the facility. Applicant shall present a plan to prevent theft and diversion. Shall present a plan for 24/7 video surveillance inside and outside the facility. Applicant present a plan for secure storage of medical marijuana and proceeds. Present a detailed plan for record keeping and inventory management. Applicant has provided copies of material safety data sheets for hazardous materials. And applicant presents a plan that included a security system in place to alert owner of possible tampering with the facility or its contents.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question? Is this, is this document that someone submits to us of public information?
The.
Can someone FOIA?
Yeah. It can be FOIAed, but then confidential information is not.
Okay. Thank you. They can submit it to us and then someone could get it. Okay. Thank you.
So I'm sorry. Um, so we're at economic impact and the, the question would be, do we want to, uh, put a criteria in for creating a cer- a certain amount of jobs?
Hey Mayor, can I chime in for a second?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I would, uh. I guess my suggestion would be since, um, since our previous applicants were essentially required. Or at least given points for paying what was considered a living wage, which was, I think, two times the poverty level. I would, I would think it might be more important for a council to consider. Uh, a minimum wage standard for those employees versus a number of employees. You know, three, six and nine are. You know, obviously the larger it is, the, the larger number of employees, but. I think it might be more important to make sure that the wage that's being paid is competitive versus tying it to the number of employees itself.
That, that seems reasonable. Yep.
Yes, there's one question. Counsel, can we legally require that someone pay a certain wage? I mean, we got points for saying you're going to pay more, but can we legally say to why you need to pay this much? Does it seem?
Our attorney just suggested that we do so.
But.
Is that soundable?
It doesn't sound like right. To make someone pay a certain wage. I'm not saying I don't think that should be what it's.
He's not suggesting a specific wage, just the fact that it's a living wage.
Right. So it has to meet a certain standard. And we were very specific about that standard as well. So.
We were, but they could have said no.
Right. And now they would have.
So now that, and, and Bill, you're, you suggested it. So I'm assuming that you're okay with that.
I am. Yes. I'm just, uh, obviously that's, you know, it's up to council, but I just think in, in fairness to. The applicants that, you know, already applied and what we require them to do. To turn around and give new licenses and not require them to be competitive with the. Uh, two that we did may go through the process. This would not seem to be equitable.
Out of curiosity, were there any that didn't? Were there any of the six that didn't?
Yes.
I was just curious. Okay, with that, so as Bill says. I'm already, as Bill says, so. And leave it at the wording that's in there now? What it says now is, what it would say is, um, applicant show. Provide a living wage of at least 200% of the federal poverty level for a family of two at its hourly basis to all employees. We would have to say a minimum of, because that would actually hold them to that. Right? Oh, it does. It does. It says at least. Everybody's okay? Okay. Sounds like we're okay with that. Bill, Bill's suggestion. Will leave the actual number of jobs created out.
Out.
Okay. All right. And then, so the next, uh, page of the memo was just some points that we pulled out that we talked about, well, kind of at length. Which is, and, and this jumps around a little bit because it goes back to the applicant criteria, which the committee felt like. If we're doing this, then the residency criteria that was in there to score extra points was irrelevant. So we went under that assumption. So I, I mean, I guess I'm looking for feedback on each of these.
I, I think that's a fair assumption.
Yeah.
Okay. And then. I'm sorry, what?
I was just saying it would be difficult to do that now.
Yeah.
To require someone to have. Any local affiliation.
Yeah. Ways to circumvent. To make.
Been done already.
Which is.
Sorry.
So then the next section actually of the rubric, which was section four, which was the building design and neighborhood impact. This is the one that I think caused the committee the most angst because we didn't have a definition of blight. So if you go back to the rubric and look at section four, and, and this jumps ahead again in the report a little bit, but we had talked in committee about the fact that. These could become standards that you actually put in. You know, the, the, the ZOE ordinance in terms of something that they would have to submit to planning commission because they have to go through a special use process to get their approval anyway. So we wondered if maybe these were more appropriate. Being something that planning commission reviews. So, I mean, so we're looking at two things here. We're looking at those building design and neighborhood impact. Um, standards, which is, you know, that the plan details economic benefits to the city by way of improvements to real property. Um, proposes, the other one is, you know, proposes to use it. These two don't matter. Proposes to use an existing building or constructs new facility. Again, those don't. You know, that doesn't make any sense anymore because it could, but could be either one and you're not scoring points. So we would recommend eliminating those. Um, but the one that really had, had a lot of our attention was the, makes a commitment to specific neighborhood improvements through elimination of blight. On-site or adjacent property. And, you know, well, the, well, council talked a lot about this too, in terms of we didn't have a definition of blight. To go by. So that was problematic. So you're looking at a couple of examples we went out and got from other communities. Because the city of Alpena, I don't think has a definition of blight in your code of ordinances either.
Right. Right. And I, I read the. The suggestions here of what, what a blighted premises, premises would be, um, in the memo. And, uh, I can't say that I don't agree with all of it. As a good definition of blight, but what I, what I would like to suggest is that, that this be. that this be worked into a blight ordinance or into an, an ordinance, a standalone ordinance, so are, because, because every, everyone should at some point be held to a lot of these, if not all of these standards, so to say, to put it in the medical marijuana ordinance holds only medical marijuana facilities to these, to this blight. And if we put it here, and then we put it in another ordinance later, then we gotta know that we've gotta change both at the same time. So can we, can we make a blight ordinance and then, and then in the medical marijuana ordinance, just refer to the city's blight ordinance?
I'll put it on my list.
Yep. Must.
To get that.
I know, isn't that great?
No.
He's over here.
That makes sense, um, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be.
Bill, Denise, do you have thoughts on that? I mean.
Oh, I, I, I think that makes sense. And I'm not sure if Don, uh, if Don Gilmet wanted to chime in at all, I know he was on here a bit ago. I'm not seeing him on here now.
Yeah, I, I think throughout history, at least in, in, in the, in the recent past, we've had a lot of issues with what, what's blighted, what can we, can enforce because our blight ordinance isn't very specific, um, well, we're dealing with cars, um, now and things like that, so, um, I think if we just kind of work that all into another, into another ordinance and refer to it, I would, I think that would probably be the best. I just don't wanna hold this specific industry just to a higher level than anywhere else.
So could we, we would not address it this time around and then develop blight ordinance and then come back and amend this, or, or how would, how would that work?
Well, I just think that everyone, we don't have to address it in the, in the medical marijuana, because if we get a blight ordinance, everyone has to adhere to it.
Yeah.
Everyone apply for the point as far as getting a property or you're fixing it, because, but if they did a prop, they don't possess a property that had it, the new blight ordinance would take care of that.
Yeah, when the time comes, so I don't, I guess.
But, but in the interim, we wouldn't have anything really related to blight.
Right.
So that standard would go away, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have to submit anything saying what they're gonna do for, for blight, correct?
Correct, yep, and then let me, I just wanna be sure that I'm clear on this too, is that if we, you know, we go forward and we don't have anything specific for blight, let's say it's three months down the road, we have it, but a business has opened in the meantime, do they have to conform to that new blight ordinance and make their changes at that time? So are we putting, you know, before we approve everything in here, should we make sure that that one is complete? You know what I mean, there's a little gap in there that I, I don't wanna say all of a sudden it's like, wait, I don't have to comply with it? Well, Bill, I, for how does, so how does that work for, for any business, not, e- even businesses outside of this one? Let's say tomorrow we pass a blight standard, um, there's no grandfather for someone to keep their blight after that, is there? If they've already been running their business or residence or whatever?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, I mean, we can put standards in, now we can't, we can't put standards in that would make the, um, improvement of the property cost prohibitive, I mean, we, we couldn't put in a new standard that said every, you know, every building in the city shall be, this is kind of ridiculous, but we couldn't say, uh, shall be, uh, gold plated, you know, and then make everybody gold plate their building moving forward and say that if you don't do that, we can shut you down for blight, um, but if it's a, if it's a reasonable restriction, um, you know, for all businesses, all buildings, uh, I think that that would pass constitutional muster.
Okay, and then obviously maybe given some cer- certain amount of time for businesses to catch up.
Right.
Yeah, for some compliance period, you couldn't, you couldn't enact it on May 1st and say this, you know, all buildings have to be in compliance by May 5th or anything like that. You have to give them, give them some time.
Sure.
So we're just not addressing it in this ordinance, and we would be under our current standards, which we really don't have anything.
Right.
There are processes in place though, someone has wanted to break their yard, someone I know does go to them, and they can use a ticket if they don't take care of it, because I've heard of the happening. So I mean, there is a process in place now to different situations.
However, what about, say, Brett's service station, if someone wishes to open one up there, they don't do anything to the outside of places like this? Can we go and make them upgrade the outside afterwards?
But they have to submit, um, their building and what it's gonna look like. So it would have to go to planning commission.
For special use, but without a, I would think without a blight requirement, like this, how can the planning commission rule in that case? Because there's nothing.
Right, well, they can now, I, I, our argument is that they can't now for any other business, so I, I don't.
Well, I'm just saying though, is that without this, then they wouldn't have to go to the expense of taking care of the outside of the place.
But, but, but when it goes through site review, and you were a planning, I was a planning commissioner, we look at those site reviews, if there's things that we think, you know, we're gonna suggest that you do X, Y, and Z, or this doesn't, this doesn't comply with whatever ordinance. We, we either approve what they submitted to us or recommend changes, um, to what this is gonna look like.
Well, right now, we don't have anything writing that can force them to do so.
Correct, so which is why we're gonna work on that.
Yeah.
Because we did.
That's all I'm getting at, the situation that if, if, if someone did that and wanted to convert that to a shop, we have no rulings or laws or whatever woke up like this, to force them to have to bring it up instead of the way it looks right now.
Well, the, technically, if you look at the rubric, there are two standards that would address that, if you were to pull these out and put these in the zoning ordinance for planning commission to look at, which is under section four, applicant commits to physical improvements to exterior of existing building or structure, an applicant submits maintenance plan that provides for upkeep of property, including exterior and right-of-way, so I mean.
That's if they get in there.
Yeah, but they have to submit a maintenance plan, so they're giving us their maintenance plan. So when they come to planning commission, they say, this is my maintenance plan, I plan to, you know, pick up the garbage, um, you know, keep the outside every four years, I'm gonna paint the tram, whatever their maintenance plan. Um, it has to be approved by planning commission.
And as councilwoman has pointed out, I mean, basically they're bound by what other businesses are right now.
Forced. That's all I'm getting at, is that they're not forced to do so.
Right.
Right, nor would anybody else that moved into Brett's Auto, which was your example. No one is.
So if, if a si- if a site plan came to planning commission, and, and it had, um, missing or broken windows, um, planning commission's just not gonna approve that, they're just not gonna say, no, you can't have the missing or boarded up windows, that has to be taken care of.
Well, I'd agree with that, but what, what forces them to have to do?
Otherwise their site plan won't be approved.
Yeah, there, the, the, the city does have the International Property Maintenance Code that does require buildings to be maintained in a certain fashion, in fact, that's, you know, Mike and Don are, and now Billy and, uh, you know, they, they, they write tickets all the time for people for different things, uh, where they've, you know, cannot kept their property properly, where they have junk and debris outside, so we can enforce things like that currently, under, under the International Property Maintenance Code. We just don't have that specific blight ordinance that specifically defines that, but, um, you know, we, we write, we write tickets quite frequently for people that have junk and debris in their yard or have, um, something wrong with their building that needs to be taken care of.
And we can integrate those other standards, like, for example, the, the maintenance plan into the changes to the zoning ordinance, so that those types of things are addressed and they will be reviewed by the commission.
Then we would have some team.
Right.
Yeah, because they made violation of the zoning, right?
Right.
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 Yeah, and I, I don't, um, I, I think that, that should be taken care of for, for any businesses, and then it's just take care of it now. That was my only argument, and I see your point, but I think that should be the same for, for any, any business, whether they're cutting hair selling, whatever, everybody should fall under that standard.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a couple of action items, right? Right of blight ordinance? And, uh, get those building design neighborhood impact statements into the zoning, um, so that they get reviewed at planning commission level, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on through that report, um, well, that's perfect, because we're getting into the changes to the zoning. So in that report, under item B, I just listed what's currently in the zoning ordinance, um. It's very limited, so you'll see more, because we're gonna put this other section of rubric standard into that zoning, but I guess the, the thing that we talked about the most was the second standard, which talks about the, the separation distance of 250 feet, and then it uses the word youth facilities, and then in parentheses, boys and girls club, and we debated a lot about this in committee, you know, during review in terms of what does that mean? Was it intended to just mean the boys and girls club? Was it intended to mean any type of youth facility? We don't really have a definition for that. So I went out and I found a definition for youth facility, if that's what we wanna do, or did it really just mean the boys and girls club? Well, that's a question to council.
In my opinion, we did that, um, in the discussion that we had, it meant just the boys and girls club. That the old, we covered the current one and we covered the new facility, um. Because I think that we would really limit ourselves to where these places could even be, if we, any place that kids went.
Right, because kids go a lot of places, and I, and from my perspective, when we were discussing that, we were discussing specifically the boys and girls club of Alpena, um, not, not youth facilities. And I did get some feedback from residents about, about other facilities where youth congregate, whether, regardless of what it is, but, um, the issue at the time, um, was the fact that, sure, there were youths going there, and they were going there four or five times a week, and it was nearby, but one of the bigger issues was that it was a leased building, and so the useless, that youth facility was leasing the building, which they could leave literally at any time, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a permanent structure for them like the boys and girls club is. And when we talked about it here, we kind of went over like what other places in Alpena are just specifically permanent like that, and I don't think we came up with it.
Not in the city.
So, yeah, we're the permanent ownership, and I'm trying to recall the conversation, I remember the boys and girls club. I know we had discussion, and I couldn't recall if we said that would include like dance centers or, you know, facilities like that, but, you know, the definition of that in my mind too, was the boys and girls club owned their facility and where they owned that versus, you know, somebody else that was leasing. I remember, yeah, you spoke a little bit on that, that particular thing, and they talked about it a lot. We did, and it, and they, arguably, they go, children go there for very long periods of time, um, most of the day, some of them, or for hours. Um, going in and out of a dance studio, or going in and out of, um, something, something similar to a dance studio, it is, they're there for like an hour, they, they come out, they get in a car and they leave, there's this, so I, I just, I never felt that it was really the same at all, so unless someone has something other than, other than the actual boys and girls club, I think we should just state boys and girls.
Specifically the name of like Alpena.
Um, because like most daycares and stuff, they're in residential, and this isn't allowed in residential anyway, so Boys and Girls Club seems to be, in my mind, and we, you know, you go through the entire city, it was the only one that popped up that needed to, to be mentioned.
Yeah, so, yeah, because we, I think we're a lot of feedback. Yeah, so I think we're good there, Denise.
We're simplifying it, just, we need to use the actual name of the Boys and Girls Club and get that word youth facility out of there.
Yes.
Okay. That is nice, because that's simple. Um, all right, so we already answered then, continuing on the same page, we already talked about the rubric standards going into the zoning, which we've already agreed that we're gonna do that, so the only other thing that we talked about very briefly was, you know, in terms of the, the problem points that, well, Rachel actually had with the licensing ordinance, because you, Rachel, you were the one that dealt more with the licensing ordinance than the committee, so maybe, I don't know if you wanna expand on just the issues not having the appeals process maybe detailed out well enough and the.
Right, so looking specifically at that, um, appeals section, just setting some, some timelines and, um, you know, how we, the process for accepting those in, um, I, I don't have an example of, you know, how that should look, but specifically, I think we need some direction on, you know, how many days do they get, um, for the appeals process? After, you know, they've been denied, um, how do they submit that appeal? Those types of things.
Right, and this is just me, off the top of my head, I would say in the appeals process, they're entitled to within 14 days. And maybe we need a form for appeal, it's a simple form, a simple form, form that they can fill out, um, that they're appealing, um, what they're appealing, and then provide the paperwork for that. Um, just, and that's.
You know, and, and what I have, you know, in any other appeal process that I've ever been part of, is if you're appealing a process in your application, and you don't think it was interpreted correctly, that's, that's what you can appeal, but to bring new information and say, oh, you know, I need to bring new information, I don't think that should be part of your appeal process, because we're, we're going off this applicant. Because what you're doing then basically, well, I guess you're applying, there's not, not really a timeline, I'm kinda talking so low, but, you know, are you, in the last one, it's like we were allowing new information to come in, and I don't think that's right, and, you know, if we have an application deadline or we're gonna limit when the applications could come in, you know, all that information needs to be filed at once. Well, that's not, well, it's not how it's gonna work anymore. No, because right now, it's gonna be like, if you're, you're applying, you're just like, okay, well, we, we kicked it out because of this, then you're gonna have to reapply with all the correct information, you know? Right, so if, if there's a denial for some particular reason at whatever level, whether. You just can reapply and bring it all. But they're not gonna bring it to an appeal, they're just gonna take it back to the zoning, right?
I mean, I would think that they would resubmit the, or submit the information that they were, um.
Missing, yeah, you reapply.
There should be a process, well, there should be a process to submit information within a certain timeframe, just missing, you know, for tax or review.
Denied because of this, yep.
Right, there should be a time to submit the rest of the information and consider it.
And I think that, that will clean up a lot at the end, if, if we had a process in the beginning, let's say after the application's been reviewed, you know, we have to give staff time to do that, um, if there's missing paperwork, um, they have.
14 days to provide, or something, you know, that would make that, that we know specifically what's going to happen rather than, you know?
And then if it's a complete application, but I think some of that will be eliminated, because we need a checklist, you know, specific, check it off, check it off, check it off, and it should, they should hand in complete applications, what if something was missed? If we give them, um, notification and time to provide that, it should clean up any appeals. If they're gonna appeal it simply because they're not happy that they were denied.
Well, Denise had developed a supplemental document that was basically steps for, um, application, and I think maybe we could refer back to that along with the checklist and really, um, set some, some more procedures in place as far as the timelines, the fourth, you know, maybe it's, um, we have a staff 30 days to review, or, or whatever it might be, that's just an example. But I think those are the types of things that I think that Denise and I and Bill need to talk through. But if you have any, um, any direction that you would like us to go, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I believe it's our 10th, and if somebody applies with us for a license and they don't meet the criteria, and they come back and say, now I do meet it, here's the paperwork, we're going to prove it and move forward, we're not gonna deny, you know, you just, you need to, you need to provide this, you know, because we don't really have a limited number anymore, so if they don't have the information, this is what you're missing, and you have to get it, if you can't get it, you're never gonna get it.
And you have so many days to do that.
Yeah, so it's not, you know, I think there should be a time, I think, within that as well, so. And that's already, I mean, isn't that stuff documented somewhere else for every other business that applies for, to open, whether it's 18, 30 days and everything else, yeah, yeah, but because I, I'm just kinda trying to limit how much we have to have in this one, if that process is already, it's already defined somewhere, it has to be, right?
Well, the process is defined in the zoning ordinance, but it's different information they're submitting for the special use than for. Well, the process is defined in the zoning ordinance, but it's different information they're submitting for the special use than for the license. So we need to match them up, maybe. Let's match them up to what it already says in the zoning.
Okay. I got you.
And maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I also want, no application is accepted without the check. And however, if it's a check, if it's a credit card payment with a fee, whatever we decide it is, nothing is taken from anyone without that completely. Here's my application and here is my cash or check. Here's my credit card.
We should say check. Here's a, for instance, of our.
And I know our ordinance already says submitted with a check, but that wasn't.
We need to be more specific, yes.
So there's no room for error. And, and I think that if there's questions as we're going through this, if staff has questions or if there's a question that comes up and nobody really has an answer to it, that it has to come back to council for direction. Because then it kind of keeps it clean and people aren't out making up, not making up stuff.
Interpreting.
Interpreting, trying to do their very best to interpret maybe something that we never intended.
Makes sense.
And Anna, you said something about, and at the time it made sense, but it's been a while, tax payments, you don't accept.
Postmarks.
Postmarks, postmarks. So maybe that's something we just continue.
Well, and then the question came up too, you know, we had some coming in electronically. As far as, you know, do we want so many copies, hard copy for, for us to review, that sort of thing? Because it's a lot of information and, you know, that thick that we have to make copies of for review.
I'm just thinking if we're going to require a, you know, a physical check, then you should have a physical application. You know, then you have, even though it's, you know, that, it's, it's a physical property that's going to come in and that would make it pretty clear and defined, you know, because if you get into ACH transfers and/or those type of things, there's a timing that goes along with that where you have the physical check, you know? And there was a deadline before. I mean, I get it. I get it. I know where you're kind of coming from. But that was, it was a little, a little bit different kind of a deadline here. For instance, this is Rogers Township again. It says, at the time of application, each applicant shall pay a non-refundable application fee to defray the costs incurred by township as set in the resolution of township, not to exceed any limitations posed by Michigan law. So basically just says at the time of application. Yeah. At the time of application.
But ours said that.
Right. Yeah. I mean.
I don't know if we want to make that in all caps in our ordinance.
No. Does have a digital copy though, asking them to provide that because people are viewing it sometimes digitally and it saves having to.
Right.
Simplifies the process of being able to.
I mean, if you receive, whoever receives this application, imagine probably the clerk's office, it comes, doesn't have a payment. Our ordinance says that at the time of application, each applicant shall, it's just going to sit there. I'm sure someone's probably going to eventually call them and say, hey, it's going to sit here in this basket until your payment comes. Because the ordinance says at the time of application, fees due. So is that cool?
The situation is a little bit different than it was the first time because we actually had a deadline.
Right.
Now there's no deadline.
Yeah. Yeah. So it just sits there. I mean, it's, and it could sit there for six months if it never.
Yeah. So it becomes a little less important.
Yeah.
But it's still important.
Yeah.
Because I don't want staff to put in time and effort in something that we didn't pay for.
Yeah. I don't think we, it won't be considered until paid.
We do have credit cards, but I don't recommend it because we have to charge 3%.
She always tells me. Did you say 3%?
3%.
Some people for convenience like that.
Yeah. And there's.
We get charged.
Do you have more, Denise?
Well, just the, in the licensing ordinance, it was the, you know, we need to clarify because it does talk about the $1,500 application fee, $5,000 licensing fee. So that's another thing that we need to change because in the last round, we counted that, we gave them that credit. The 1,500 was part of the 5,000. It just doesn't say that.
But 6,000.
It's the application.
No, that's what I'm, yeah. This one says, and I don't mean to keep referring back here, I'm not suggesting that Rogers Township is perfect. It just happens to be the one I have. It just says, a non-refundable local permitting fee shall be paid annually to the township of Rogers by each commercial marijuana facility permitted under this ordinance of no more than $5,000 per permit as set by resolution. Apparently there was a resolution that set that fee, just like all of our fees are set by resolutions. Yep.
Which is something like the $1,500 they have to turn in with their application as part of whatever fee we set.
Yeah. Well, we would take that out because that's not part of it anymore.
No, but it would be part of it though because it was, that was applied to the current applicant. So it just, if they, if they move forward with it, then it goes toward their first year's 5,000, right?
So let's say it's 5,000, that $1,500 goes toward their first year.
Yep.
Because that's how it's been done.
Yeah.
In addition.
It's $1,500 when you bring me the application. If you're not approved, I keep the 1,500. But if you are approved, you only owe me 3,500 because now you have a license. Next year, you owe me 5,000.
If we set that.
And we want to clarify that because there was some confusion with applicants.
Right.
Yep.
So the $1,500 is non-refundable no matter what. But if they get a license, it goes toward whatever our year of the key is.
I got you. It's worth the first. But I don't understand why they don't just pay the whole fee at the same time. Oh, I see. I got you. No, I'm following.
Their application could be denied for other reasons.
I see. That makes sense. And then, and, you know, as I understand it, just then licensing fee is a yearly fee that is charged. Annually, yeah. Yeah. $5,000. So 3,500 basically. Got it. So you make that all sound nice. Yeah. And what, and what it says in here, which is always good, I think, and you guys are probably way ahead of me. But they're just saying the non-refundable fee as set by resolution in township. So you don't have to keep going back every year if it increases later.
That's what I read now.
Same as always. Exactly. Oh, is that how it is now? Yes. Yeah. These are going to change. Okay.
The last point on the report, Bill, I think this was your suggestion at the very end of the meeting, which was the signage.
Yeah, it was an issue that was raised, I think, by council member Mitchell. And I know he wanted to discuss it. So we thought it's important to be on the list of items to discuss tonight.
Yeah, the, from reading it like this, you just ended by recognize symbol for marijuana. And I feel like this, facilities may not use exterior signage or displays with neon flashlights or similar noxious or intrusive lighting or effects. Machines may not use exterior signage or displays that contain the image of a marijuana leaf or other commonly recognized symbol for marijuana. After that point, it goes into contact of what the sign is because it says can't use words of marijuana. We need cannabis with stuff like this. So we just, we stop at that point there, recognize symbol for marijuana. And that would be it.
That's fine. Yeah, because not only with this, with the, the Supreme Court case, but I read, someone asked and someone emailed me the, the state statute under the, under the act itself. I know the guy. Did you send that? I don't know. Somebody sent that. Should look at the front section. But it, it covers that, it covers a whole bunch of other stuff anyhow. So.
Well, we, we spent a lot of time in, in the planning commission having to go through that whole sign ordinance to determine contact.
Yeah.
So.
You know, whether you want to, I saw a couple of them that referred to, the same as everything else. They just refer to like blight, refer to the blight ordinance. This would refer to this, to the, the city's sign ordinance. We already have one.
Except, except we don't refer to the marijuana leaf where.
Well, it would, you know, and, and whether, whether Bill Pfeiffer wants to add in there that they must comply to, to the act. Because the act tells them that they, what they can and can't have on the outside of the building, which, which it's my understanding is, covers a lot of stuff. Really, it says marijuana or it looks like it has it on it. So.
Yeah, it does. There's, there's specific language in there. We could just adopt that language.
654, is that, are you just?
I got 656 on my clock.
You're ahead of us here. So what's about to happen?
Oh, no, it's 654. I'm sorry. It's 654.
I do want to ask just really quick, because we've got some members in the, in here. Do you guys feel like, and I'm not really sure what a lot of your capacity is, but other than Kevin. But do you guys feel that, is there anything we kind of forgot that you want to bring up now or something that, something that came to your attention while we were discussing everybody's, go ahead, please?
It's nothing that you guys forgot. I just want to thank the council for holding this meeting and reconsidering everything that you have reconsidered. I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know subsection 225 what, but it really, as a citizen of this community, I just find it really enjoyable, is the right word, that you guys would reconsider. Or, you know, somebody could bring something to you and it's not a definite no, that you would look into it. And I really appreciate that. And just, I wouldn't have known that if I wasn't, didn't know Kevin and, you know, came here. But it just is reassuring to know that your voice is heard. So I want to thank you for that.
And, you know, a good example of that is too, is that there's two members of council that voted no because there are people in our community that, you know, we represent too, and their voices are being heard as well. So. You know, so we definitely wanted to make sure that, you know, we try to do the best that we can up here. And this council does work very hard at that. But we don't agree on everything, but that's what makes our community and our council great.
That's fair.
That's true. Well, Cindy last night, not always me. 99% of the time for some reason. We're going to go back to two-way streets one day. I'm sorry. I got three years. Come on. So with that, any, any, anything come up on virtual that somebody indicated that? Okay. So does the direction for Denise and Rachel and Bill, everything seem relatively clear?
I think we have to go back and just take a hard look at the ordinance and start integrating everything in. And I'm not sure what our timeframe is on that, but Bill, do you have any indication?
I don't. I think initially we had talked about trying to get, get something by that first meeting in May. Well, there's no way we're going to do that. So I think first meeting in June might be more realistic at this point.
Okay.
I can get the zoning side of it written pretty quickly because that's going to have to be, you know, go to planning commission first anyways. So I might as well get that started.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
We need another work session?
Cool. I don't.
I don't think so. Unless we run into some issues that we need.
Yeah, just call one. Yeah, if we, yeah, we can always call one if, if there's something substantial we need to discuss. Yeah.
And we add an until meeting.
Yeah, we can add it on to a meeting or if it's going to be something really small, but if it's something that needs a further discussion, we can just. Yeah. Quick, virtual.
Brief.
It's worked really well. So I think they do. Yeah.
Oh, 658.
Awesome. My second. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.